Okay, I'm on page 632. I'm going to call three and four. This body is absent, Stephen.
What does that mean?
This body. So I remember that number two is ten or eleven. I'm going to move it in the trunk. I'll go in the non-public session up to the front. This is important because I want to make sure to say to Kara, turn back to the rest of it. So let's get to public comment. And then we'll move to public. Move on to the rest of the meeting. Is there any else? Patty, can you go in for the agenda?
Just, there are even a quick two. I'm going to have number thirteen.
All right. And we will move to the next. This is the last few minutes. Six minutes.
I would like to make a mention that the minutes, page six, we have ended to reflect on page eight. Sorry. It's two portions, but I have the same opportunity as being on page eight at State that are sufficient to review and approve on a case by case basis. The limited use of school facilities for the Cambridge School Community and town of Cambridge for student use through the end of the school year will be remiss to the law. We said it was fine, Mrs. Mendel. My motion with the limitation for student use, the limitation was for the school district, not for the town. So I would like to have that revised appropriately to apply my motion. And the other amendment that they have is on page fourteen. And there's the first golden section and the votes on that is flip-flopped. And that motion was to allow the town of Cambridge to use PA for town purposes. And on the roll called vote, what's recorded is Mrs. Mendel, yes, Mrs. Vaughn, no, Mrs. Vaughn, yes. I'm sorry, we're getting a little bit. Mrs. Mendel, yes, Mrs. Vaughn, no, Mrs. Vaughn, no, Mr. Gall, yes. Mr. Canidge, yes. We in favor, our town opposition. I see Harry. Harry. That was actually flip-flop. Mrs. Mendel, no, Mrs. Vaughn, yes, Mrs. Vaughn, yes, Mr. Gall, no, Mr. Canidge, no. That was two in favor of the opposition and the motion actually failed. This is a motion I would like to approve amendments as amended.
Please do this again. One second. Okay, just a second. All right. And motion to approve, eight, six minutes. And as a move, all favor?
Yes.
Close the sessions. Yes. And so in four is our first public comment section. With us the way. It's time. Okay. All right. All right. And so quickly before you. Motion to approve. This is more.
Yes, so sorry, thank you. I would like to nominate certified staff for positions for next step.
Make a motion to approve the nomination.
Second. All right. This question. All given. All right. Close.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve the open position at Cambridge Academy. I'll second that.
Second.
This discussion is, I want to thank all of our staff and for going through the thirty-five hours and being involved with the people process.
Okay. All right. Close. And second. Thank you. And so these are the latest. This is another one. So we'll move on to page seven, three. So really the biggest thing in the meeting is the presentation from the Little School Innovation Committee. And I know that this thought and this committee were considered to plan on this. Slide forty-five last week. The report is oddly handsome. So I don't even know this thought.
I did bring printed copies. Does everybody have one copy?
Has it been? Thank you so much.
Yes.
Want to take one for Anne, April?
Sure. Thank you for that.
Yes. I have a whole book. Start it. Can I maybe give you all the ones you spoke about? We probably wouldn't be seeing them all.
Uh, the next tick I might have this.
Oh, sorry, it's precise.
That may be not progress.
Sure.
I guess I should have said a little bit more. So just a brief introduction on what seems like forever this committee puts together to make an affirmative work for the school. And the outcome of that committee was regulation, the best we can vote. There was an initial rapid issue of benchless space we had on Hill School, based on what we knew about it at the time. The board subsequently requested another committee, ten of the chair, to look at the possibilities and needs that we have today, that's not based on that at the post. So that's a good idea. Thank you. I don't believe in PowerPoint. Everybody else just asks sort of print it out. People know this to me. So now they're going to do that. I need printed copies of the report to follow along. And I'm just going to kind of go through it a little bit with my notes we'll talk about later. Like Andy said, the spend around for a lot. We didn't anticipate it. We'll go for a number to number of other. But here we are. So you have the quarter by you. I think you guys have a handful of the schematics, food and schematics from the technical consultant that has been before this board. I'll let you run out on the board there. We're going to start on page six. And they gave you a bit of the introduction there about this committee. This is part of. Is it okay if I take my desk there? Maybe something happens. So just a little more here. I started by giving you guys deep read history, just knowing that maybe you weren't on board at the beginning of this. You're the third subcommittee now in this process. So you'll see that there was this base needs subcommittee that first footed at the school with the charge of determining whether or not it made sense to bring that building up to code. It would require a large name if we did. Or whether we want to address this program with the Hill School. And what would that look like? What would we need to be at Hill School after that? It became very clear very quickly during that process that village would always be a problem. Even if you spent the money to bring it out to code, it was just built at a different time. The original building was more than a hundred years old. It's the entries were on grade. The additions that were put onto it over the years didn't line up to any of the floors on the original building. It just would always be a problem and a big expense to maintain and keep up to standards. So the dynamite recommendation was to close that building with Hill. That recommendation came with a couple of candidates. There wouldn't be enough money in its current form to take all of those programs. A two module was put in. I think it was going on two years out of five years on at least. And it was made clear that we need to look at and figure out what was going on. Well, what would, what would need to be done there after? But it made sense to kind of wait till the winter to see what reality was on the ground there. We don't have as much exposure to reality because we had one year in. This year, kind of like the test was next year with the COVID pandemic. But it gave us enough to kind of see what was going on. We saw many times just over the year that not just this one, but last year, the first year that the two buildings were burnt. It seemed like every time we were in things that then because something wasn't working where it was. And there's not a lot of flexibility. It was created this scenario effect where to correct one problem, you have to displace three, looking at a whole bunch of people. Then you see where it goes and you move people again. So the village disposition subcommittee that kind of overlapping after the mortgage or village was sold. I talked to you a little bit about the CMA. Looking on page eight, nine, we have a couple of reports that are just very, very fruitful if you look at. Independent of this, a lot of the information that we are referencing, we're talking about, it's already known. So they did just kind of summarize and digest some of that for you in this report as well.
Question?
Sure.
For those of us that want to look at these, where is the easiest place for us to go and grab those reports?
So I don't know where the S U has them. I know they're available. I fully intend on transferring ownership of our Google Drive that has copies of all that in it to the S A U, which they could begin to do that way also. I do think I sent it out to you guys when you first came on the board there, but that's going back a long time. It was very burned to the death. But you may also have it that way.
I think so. Abby had the time to drive at one point. I don't think it's outside of already the needs, but I will check it for and just make sure you get the one that's easiest. And is there also some reason you can't just put it on the public website? It was, yeah, it was. I just, I don't know. It's not where this, but I can't make sure that that gets refreshed. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, some of these reports are just twenty-five, six, and you're channel two. So I just kind of lose the relevance and fall off of the website at some point. It's information. Yeah. Exactly. But as far as the CMA engineering study, that's a report that looked at all of the school district buildings and gave you everything. It's very, very important that meets standards, is efficient, recommends capital, regular categories, all kinds of stuff. And it references often a separate coming up report, which was part of the Yankton United Home Projects here in the district. There's also a separate coming up report to need to look at. It's also common, which I want to transfer over. But the important stuff is reference to the CMA reports. I don't think you really need to take too many like too much unless you want to get some better time to read the material. But for CMA at the bottom there, there's some bullet points. Really the key things about that. Hill School H back systems are outdated. That became kind of the forefront during the COVID pandemic. We saw the importance of addressing those systems. The H back systems are the newest part of the building that was all for the most prior forty years old. We have some of these sorts of parts and things like that. It's the older parts of the buildings. We have radiators and it looks like old exhaust systems and things like that. But I don't even know if they're working at this one definitely since like there is makeup area who brought in. You know, their exhaust is just kind of creating negative pressure where, where anywhere is coming in through, through the building envelope being compromised, whether it's melting wood or things stopping the steel table. Plumbing fixtures, they're outdated, broken, improvised or air resistant. You know, you can only do some parts of the water, faucet on a semi narrow sink. No fire is anywhere in that building. It would be, I don't know if the kitchen had it simple, but it's just saying.
I think the kitchen, yes, is above there. Yeah.
And the electrical system is also in some person that went from sixty years old. It just doesn't meet the base standards. Many of those classrooms on one side. So you plug in a computer monitor and air conditioner. You've got to include exhausts of those, those floor plugs if you want any room.
Yeah, I think a question at the bottom.
Sure.
Thank you to Mr. Pastor's team for preparing this for us. If we know that all these issues are currently existing, do you have confirmation that all these are currently on the C I P plan?
So we'll talk a little bit about it. But for the most part, the facilities that were has left these items off of the C I P plan. I've heard it discussed at this board many times in its previous makeup. But that's been a deliberate decision to leave it off of the C I P plan because being able to be looking at a large scale project at that school at some point. And it made more financial sense to include that in, in the process of addressing the large scale project rather than piece, you know, creative comprehensive H back and creative comprehensive electric plan. Do it, don't kind of add it. Let's hear it out, let's there. And then, you know, double side your ability if that's what you're doing and trying to start from scratch and found. So maybe kind of deliberate, you left that to the side and gone by with the hopes of addressing it all at once instead of interventively. Josh, please jump in and correct me if I, if I missed anything.
That, that is correct. I don't like a lot of these ideas.
There are a few things that we want to share. It's like fire alarm was, was grossly outdated and under starting the building. Like they were three years or so from that. Now Josh was able to get that to really modern accessible fire alarm system that could be expanded with the buildings expanding. And so there are some critical, I say, key things that obviously you can either weather and expand whether you're not, but electrical and things like that. You get by. So we can address all at once. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Dennis Myers is the architectural firm that the school board used to kind of create a handful of recommendations initially. They presented a few years, but now we've read three years since they presented to you guys. I think it was the spring of twenty eighteen. But they created a whole bunch of scenarios, being if you fix village and add it, if you also fix Hill and add basically small scale additions to each of those buildings. Or they proposed a large scale education to Hill if you closed village. We didn't just want to accept that that's true. So we did still kind of look at the law of the small scale addition to Hill School when we were looking at this. But we're going to detail kind of what they went through because we mostly took her what they're finding. So turning over to page ten. I give you a bit of an overview of the existing Hill School site. So you really have three phases of description for that plan. Down at the bottom, you can kind of see it although the colors printed a little off. But yeah, the six classrooms in orange that were built in sixty-two, six more, what is now six more classrooms that were built in sixty-nine, but those were at one point over the concept. And then basically the rest of the building was constructed in the four. And that's where the building went down now. The newest part of that building is essentially forty years old. It serviced well. It's been maintained well, but it's tired. And there are things that have been deferred that we need to really address. So page eleven, you're going to kind of see. We start at the top, really with the, with the top of the building as we look at it on the previous page. We spoke with Josh, we can use these reports. We spoke with Suzie Ritha, Ben Principal. We brought Wendy in when she came on board. Tammy LaCass, the assistant principals talked with us. We attended a staff, all of the staff. And kind of took all of this information to what we have here. And starting at the top, we're looking at the gymnasium. It's a multi-purpose room. It, it facilitates all of the gym classes each day, all of the lunch periods each day. If there's a schoolwide assembly that's going to squeeze into it somewhere. It, it really is a multi-purpose room. And it, it does a lot of jobs. It's undersized, floorage, gym, light-based, indoor. Really, you have a basketball court that's going to need to go onto the floor, but there's really no room outside of that or to it all. There's no stage. The, the rated capacity is much smaller than the school population. So you really can't uphold this and handle the whole school legally. But I imagine they're probably still trying to do quickly next year or when, when we're out in our COVID world. But if you're looking at the numbers on the certificate of the door, we shouldn't be. The needs of this room are really thick to hold the whole day in that building to get all of the tier of classes in, to get all of the lunch periods in. Every, every schedule that is working around, how do we do that? It also means that the facilities group has very little time to launch or order to recover from lunches back to after the E T M classes. Kids and students can come into the room all at once and go back because there, there isn't fifteen minutes to collect the food. It just doesn't exist in the day to get everything in there. So that can be the end of our study. It really is to change. But we'll talk about that after I go through the deficiencies. And we'll get into the recommendations. Moving on to page twelve, the classrooms and the structural areas. We had a lot of, we got the spaces in that building that are a result of additions over the years. Every time an addition is accepted, then the system go and it created kind of pockets of rooms that have no natural light. In many cases, no second door in the room. So there's only one way in, one way out. Those men's have been sliced and diced over years to address space needs. Some of them, as a result, have no ventilation, no heat. The psychologist's office has had what was a little bit larger room, but the psychologist landed on the half that the radiator is on. So they have no heat, which is probably no pain because they're off of a hallway or an interior spot. It's probably not terrible, but it knows to be more fresh air. And there's an immediate need for additional classrooms. We know that there's a trailer sitting outside. There's two of them. We'd have to eliminate our preschool program because it was a problem since the purchase. So that's that shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody. In the nineteen sixty-two, we got a building, which is coming back to the previous age. It's the yard section, the original section. There's a lot that could be done to those rooms to make them function better. Every wall has something on it that is an obstacle for furniture placement. The side walls have these large old ledges that stick out about four or five inches from old chalkboards that for the most part have been diverted to boards and stuff like that, whiteboards. But the ledges still exist. You can't really put anything against them. There's a lot of painting going up and down on these walls. The window wall has a radiator from one end to the other. So you're really sure you can put a lot of furniture against that because it ain't with its airflow. And then the wall that the doors are on all have sinks on them, which again, you have the sink cabinet, the exposed piping, all these just obstacles that give you very little option for, for putting furniture against walls and out of the way. You'll see that the radiators are locked right now because they're going, they just had to push everything against it. But to really set up a classroom based unit. And then say nothing for the fact that those rooms don't, don't meet today's standards for a classroom. Check the three twenty-one, the ed regulations. It's also that little construction. And they define a kindergarten classroom should be a thousand square feet. Or if you, if you're more than a thousand square feet, there's a square footage per child, but it's, it's at least a thousand square feet that you have to have. And this is where our kindergarten classrooms are right now. And those rooms range from seven hundred and twenty-four to eight hundred and fifteen square feet. So some of our smallest rooms in the building are closing the classes, but should have the most space by, by law. And then we move over to the next, the sixty-nine addition, which is the six other classrooms that were originally open concept. But we added walls because we learned that these that open concept doesn't work. These walls, though, people like to refer to them as the ten thousand dollar walls. But they don't, they don't block sound. They don't, if a kid gets against the wall on one side, picks a ball on the other, they're not much better than the old accordion balls that were there before them. There needs to be a better option implemented there at some point because they don't, they don't serve their purpose much better than anything that's collapsible. And that's what was there before them. But these are also small classrooms there. The square footage is slightly larger than the old one, not by much, in many cases in the same. But we can, we can talk about, if you look at the large schematic that says existing floor plan in the bottom right, that shows you the square footage of each room. So you're looking at, sorry, I'll go over my glasses. You're looking at about seven hundred and seventy-three per square feet for each room, plus or minus. Again, below the thousand square foot person you're living in. Or it's nine hundred square feet for pretty pretty ones before. Elementary classrooms generally, it was nine hundred square feet. But again, we're, we're below that in many of those cases. So those are classrooms where they don't meet today's standards. And then you have the eighty-four wing that, you know, is the rest of the building. And those classrooms are supposed to grow for, for J A's education standards. We're, we're in the nine hundred plus square feet for each of those. That being said, nineteen eighty-four was before the Americans with Disabilities Act. There are still problems with that section of the building that we need to address. And we'll talk about that as we continue on page fourteen, which we talk about operational support areas. That's the kitchen, IT, workroom, workroom. Those are also support areas, not, not, not instructional areas of the classrooms. But the kitchen has, in many cases, original surfaces that's, you know, like rain and stuff like that from the eighties, which is not appropriate for food prep or anything like that. It should be stainless steel surface. The ventilation in there is, I don't know if there is heat, but it's very hot in there all the time. You're in there, you'll be interested, like, don't go on or know what this time of year or even warmer times get, what that we're getting. But we have standalone refrigerators, freezers that are coming contribute to that problem. There's really no desk space for a waiting service coordinator that's on, that might be on the ground in there. The day, there's no storage. It's not amble for, for what it is now. Well, they don't cook it. Make the meals there. It's still not even appropriate for the serving operation that they do. It needs to be updated and proper, proper food supply areas, whether that's client control or trust coverage. And we'll talk about that again in the recommendations. There, there's a workroom going below the kitchen. The workroom that we're talking about is a professional workroom. It is a room that was previously a classroom that was the pastor, Michelle Dell. And that room holds baskets of collections of books that the staff uses as part of the literacy program in their room. So they, it's, it's a library for the staff. They check out collections of books that they use with their students in their rooms. They write back, they get the next, they get it from their next lesson, the progression of their literacy program. That doesn't exist. That doesn't exist now, it's a bookroom, because you don't have the room for it. It's been merged into the library right now, so what was the library storage room is now part of the bookroom. And then maybe a third of the library floor pack is down to the number for the rest of this collection. And the last I heard that function was not even completely built out, that we're told it's not fifty percent built out, and that it was still currently. So, right now, anything, any enlargement to that, it takes away from the library for the students. And the shelf space for, for student book collections. We talk, we live in workrooms there, those are deficient, they don't really exist, there's one that we created. Josh took over the, our storage room and created a workroom there, and we're talking about workrooms, these are rooms that have mirrors, I think one of them has separate mailbox and zooming. Some people use supplies, paper and stuff like that, that's accessible, quickly easily. The other one is in the library, because there was no place for it. It's starting down, there are copies and stuff, we're in, I need to run across the halls or the library, but there's no way to, and the distraction of the people that I get in now wasn't feasible for the classroom operation, so we got moved to the library. That's also a distraction to the library, though, when staff members are going to hang out for copies, the machines randomly firing up during classes to print things off. It, it, it's a necessary evil right now, but it's, it's an evil for the library program as well now, we don't have any other place to put it though. And in all honesty, it's kind of in the middle of the building, and it's not that far from the workroom unit that we have, and it was should be kind of more in the mix of the rooms, like it's, instead of having to take across the building to get to those things. Information technology wasn't even a thing when this building was built, the newest part of building, marketing, about computers in every classroom. Wire networks, let alone wireless, so it just, the infrastructure isn't really there, there's, there's access points and stuff that have been added, but the deployment closet has been improvised into what, what, what is the electrical room. Seems like that's working okay, but IT was frequently kind of stashing their graveyard items, collecting what they're turning their tea, which just kind of created a problem. They're doing better about that, from what I understand, it didn't seem as bad, the glass ceiling was in there, but there's just no other place to put some of those things that are taken out of service while they're waiting to be fixed, or waiting to be put in service, like, they're getting thrown on the floor, and it was getting pretty rough. You want to be able to get to your electrical panels and things, you're shut off when you, when you need to. So having that non-stick floor on the floor is not ideal. And then storage, there isn't any storage now, any other thing that was previously used to store things has been used now for educational or instructional space. The facilities department has one small janitor's closet across from the nurse's office, give or take. And then there's a small storage room around the corner in the three, four, right, but that is, that's really it for, for storage. I mean, we have the closet that was recently brought in, but I don't, I don't think the plan is to see that any longer than we have to. And then moving over to page fifteen, we're talking about teachers, where it's a small windowless room. It does not see many people, and it's got two little toilet closets, they're on the right. And when I say closet, we are closet, there's one of them, you can't even close the door without, like, sideway between the wall and the, to close the door, like it is. They really don't even have a full three years on there, but a lot of persons are meeting some, and it's just kind of the worst, they're enough of a heating area. And they're dead, and you don't even make it far. The other one's actually one of the rooms in the building that's pretty nice, where it's a tenant's space. Our only suggestion is kind of to make sure we look at long-term storage, because I don't think the storage closet will ever be reclaimed for the art room. The architect proposes using it for a different purpose, where already using it for a different purpose. But I'll be honest, I couldn't have really lost weight, and even, it looks like there's some more improvised storage solutions in there from a furniture standpoint, since I was in there last, a little bit, we'll organize. But the bridge is a great sized plan, our program is able to have a common area of work tables, supply closets, free standing supply closets, shelved materials, it actually is one of the few rooms that, that is pretty nice in its own current form, but we just want to make sure that the storage needs are in that, where that closet isn't there, but it does look like they are. The library, though, like I said, we've got a third somewhat that's been taken for the literacy collaborative materials. The storage room's been taken for the literacy collaborative materials. They're, they're half titled at one point, but the other half carpeted is still there, which kind of gives you this weird transition in the regular middle of the room. It doesn't like that with, from churns or tablecloths, and it's just kind of strange. So there are just a few things that we're going to look at in there. Then we go over to the office, you know, the administrative areas, it's the main office. Conference spaces, meeting spaces, the administrative team office areas, there are all of that. The main office is stored pretty well for the two people that are in there. But in talking to them, they had some concerns about the security in the lobby. Right now, the security door has been installed kind of near, after the entrance of the office. You don't get buzzed in or anything before that, you actually don't. In the first seven doors, you go through a doorway, was the second seven doors, but the doors have been removed. There's a door to the principal's office on the right, there's a door to the main office on the right, then you encounter the lock doors to the corridor. There was a little concern that the lock doors shouldn't be before any, any doors that could be potentially breached by somebody with ill intent. And we do kind of concur with that, as we'll see when we get to the recommendation part. The nurse's office is very small, the bathroom is like, the teacher's room bathroom, just slightly larger, it's not a NBA component. It, it was, it was in a different time, and it won't need to be looked at. And then, the way back to electrical, you know, the distribution panels and the connecting wiring, all three of those are as original. We have a few lucky rooms that have gotten, you know, into the public chat, or at some point, at Sweet Talk, Josh was his predecessor or something. I think I know Josh enough to know what it was, he kind of got Sweet Talk, but somewhere along the lines, either the East bathroom, or, or something, or somebody else, they got the inputs that they still desire. But for the most part, people don't have any of the electrical access to it. And as a result, there's extension cords, they're just wired going up into the ceiling, and again. Well, they're, not usually electrical wire, but it's some wires, data cables, things like that, go out and come back down. You can see in the picture, there's extension cords going under the railing, but that's just a big government too. I didn't want to give you the room number that that was in, I'll let you go find it. You know, you can see on the next page, just a snare of wire and stuff from power strips, like it's making the best of a bad situation. But it is a bad situation for, for, maybe the twenty-first century. Is it, what's good for that on this? You'll see also, talking about electrical lighting fixtures, almost the original, I'm not moving, unfortunately enough to be able to update them to everything to split it in the original lighting, but there's a lot of broken ones, missing concealer plates, that just adds to the entire exposed look of the building. Page eighteen, plumbing, we have brand new bathrooms, probably about five years old now, give or take. Those are in good shape, they meet modern standards. The only suggestion people are at from a standpoint, was the boys are in urinals, do you have privacy dividers? You can see it right from the hallway, but the last time I was in there, they do now, so that the only complaint about those brand new bathrooms is that are amplified. But you go up into the eighty-four, we have a building where the other bathrooms are, those are very tight, very tired, do not appear to meet any standards. Just kind of make sure there, it doesn't not look like there's five foot two radiuses, or any, between those, those sinks and those, those stalls. And then continuing with plumbing on the next page, there, you can just see some of the original plumbing fixtures in the classrooms. They're tired, they're, they're rusted, and they're somewhere one by, like, filler has been placed on top of the counter, but we rolled through a bit for a faucet and stuff like that. It gets the job done, but it's time to create, there's just one thing for those fixtures and get them out of there. And then the second oldest portion of the, at the bottom down, eight, is not much better than a little bit. And then we go over to page twenty, where we're talking about page back. I mentioned that some of the cells doesn't have heat, there's a lot of rents, probably, there's, it just really should be used for instructional areas, that may be appropriate for an office space for a person. But it doesn't, doesn't seem, where it should be bringing large groups of students into these rooms, leaving small groups of students into these rooms that, that, that is spaced better well used for your work rooms and, you know, other purposes. But you can see pictures there, the exhaust systems that, what I believe are exhaust, at least they look like they fed up to, on page twenty. They look like they fed up to, perhaps, roof mounted fans at one point, I don't know if they were, I don't know. I don't know if they're still in service, but it would be like, it certainly doesn't appear that the tiny makeup there is just kind of coming in through the, the lack of tightness in that building. And then the bottom picture there, you can just see that's a ready wall that is just wall-to-wall furniture, which I'm hoping is just kind of the result of COVID situation right now. Trying to promote some desks, the, it's just a very stupid situation. But then we move over to page twenty-one, we're talking about the eighty-four, but like, you've got, I showed you a unit now, like, you just don't know what we're talking about. I will tell you, doing a job similar to Josh's in my past, when people complained about the unit ventilators, at first I was kind of thinking that they were being a little difficult, until we went to a staff meeting, and the unit ventilator was coming over our head while we were trying to talk in the library. They're very loud, very loud, and you don't have to go to say, make it reapaul, and whatever time they shut off, and like, shut out on us. You realize just how much noise it has contributed to the memorial. Then below that picture, I should, you can see that there are people in those rooms that have had a bathroom fan, I can't remember the term, installed at some point. The one in that picture actually does not work anymore, this which has been removed. That's an office that I think, at least was a quiet room at one point, and it's passed. So, like, let's say, been removed, which is a bit removed from safety standard, and they're not that, like, that. But in the speech office across the hall from that room, there's also one of those bathroom fans, and they're very loud. It's not switched with the lights or anything, it's, it's always switched in the back corner of the room, so you actually have to walk and use it, it's not forced on the user. Turning it off to air from that room. So that's kind of the big overview there of what's wrong with the building. Going a little deeper into space needs, which we'll talk about a little bit in recommendations there. So what we did with the, recommendations on page twenty-two, was we kind of took it section by section in the same order that we identified the deficiencies for it. So talking about the gym. Multi-purpose room, really. We recommend that a new gym be built, that it be large enough to accommodate athletic events. The whole school, that's the assembly, that it has a stage for those purposes, so that it can also be used for things there right now that Sheldon's well are good with. They can have a stage, I'm talking about the Christmas concert, the spring concert, things like that. It also kind of addresses a community, which is always seems to be lacking in athletics, if we have a, a appropriately sized facility out of their school building. But what happens when you construct this gym, you free up what is right now the physical education teacher's office and equipment storage room, that can become storage space for your kitchen area. That multi-purpose room is now available to be a lunchroom. It can accommodate smaller groups of students in an assembly format, so if there was a need for a break, that whole meeting where the fourth grade classes all want to be. There's a room large enough that they could do that around the lunch schedule, that, that this room can address a staff meeting, without sitting on the little chairs in the library, and things like that, it, it just, it frees up the schedule quite a bit during the day. And it also gives the, the gym teacher kind of an alternative, so if you needed to have a whole school assembly, you needed to, from a facility standpoint, get that, the gym ready. Gym classroom can now shift into the old gym, you know, where it's now a lunchroom. You know, taking provides a class in there on a, on a, that's a basis. Below that, we talk about full-size classrooms. And we actually, like I said, we, we looked at the proposals from Dennis Myers, there was a large scale and a small scale. And we didn't want to just dismiss the small scale one, which is on the last page of your blueprints, it's marked eight, one, zero, four in the bottom right. That's the small scale one, which I also wrote those in conjunction with where Vating and Mouchen Village. But we did look at it to see, like, would that be adequate? And we were able to kind of cross that off, and not get into why, because we actually looked at the large scale one. And we thought that fell slightly short as well when it comes to classroom count. We recommend that sixteen additional full-size classrooms be built in that school. And the reason for that is because twelve of the existing classrooms are upper size. And if you got into the bigger concept of, like, taking down the binding walls, and building on another place that's you might build a base of classrooms that are the right size, but you're gonna ruin those schools with windows and things like that, but they just make it, make it so like that's not the best option, that the best option would perhaps be to take those smaller classrooms that are proper for a general education environment, but used for some of these secondary needs of the building right now, those things that are in the windowless rooms. So, we're at the number sixteen, and if you look at the large scale addition from Dennis Myers, Myers in one place has proposed a site plan. They actually, they called for a few things, they're, we didn't really agree with. If you look at, and this is assuming you guys are somewhat familiar with the floor plan of the existing building. But if you look at the two classrooms across by the current art room. They were both taken that wall down. We did not agree with that, it seemed silly to take away a classroom. And what I think their thought process was on that, was at the time that they did this, the district was looking at a elementary van program, we've gone away from that. So I think what they were trying to do was create a large meeting room there. That isn't necessarily at this point with the direction that we've gone. So we would recommend that we do not keep that wall down, create one big room, keep the two full-size classrooms. And if the district ever did go out and put in a, even a van program, they could look into perhaps two adjacent classrooms for a van room. If they needed to, two of these are. Or, well, give you another option, but don't take away the classroom. But if you add on to this building, you see by the gym, there's a gap loss in the classroom, right below the gymnasium. That's to create a connection to a new addition from the old, so you lose a classroom there. And then their, their proposed addition has a gym, and I believe it's twelve classrooms off of it. To get to the sixteen classrooms, we would propose that you keep the wall in those, in the existing building that are across the cover. That you add the twelve, I believe it's twelve, it's now correct. It's actually fourteen, so you keep the wall, you add the fourteen, and then you find a place to do a one more classroom. So, what else are possibilities? We're not on our text, we're just throwing out some possibilities here. If you look at the proposed addition, the bottom right corner, there is a spot where you could kind of write one more green, or get the phone. Or if you look at the small scale edition. The A one of four diagram. You'll see up to the right of the gym, there's a stage and then behind the stage, there's a music room. Large music room there. Maybe you still do that, although it's not on the large scale edition. That's your fifteenth classroom. The music room is kind of always on that point. From a noise standpoint, that's nice. It's up with the gym and not really the chase to start smaller areas. And if you add a band program. The room is probably sized for it. But then it gets into your sixteen there. What does sixteen classrooms do for you? That brings you to a in that uh the reason that forty or forty-one classrooms for the building. Right now there are twenty-five. But again, to their mind, nearly half of those are not appropriately sized, twelve of them, twenty-five. And that's not counting the R, because that's not a typical classroom. I love that I like classroom counts on both sides. But if you add on those classrooms. You give yourself a bit of flexibility in the future here. Our population grows and you need to go back up to five grades per grade level. You have those rooms. If there's a bubble in there, you need to add a room to a grade level as it kind of goes up through. You have the room. You have the room to bring back the title preschool if the funding still exists. Defense, talking about the rehearsal preschool right now, if that becomes a reality. A couple extra classrooms and you couple that with. The renewed designated for the restoring title preschool. The room, the two rooms that are designated for um TLC preschool, which is the special education preschool program. If you need to add one more, and you kind of add four preschool classrooms, you have that. I would pretty much with the. Probably more than asking you much to use it, not a full day, that's a lot for a small time. Um, or if you add a bubble grade and you got up to three hours, all of a sudden they get on that room. At three hours, if they could push it down to this stool, it just, it gives you a lot of flexibility. I'm not endorsing any of those. I'm not saying there you go. It like it gives you flexibility as if you just had a large. Each group cycling through the district, you could you could pull fifth grade down if you wanted to. To give TRS a little breathing room if as the bubble grade goes through there, you know. So sixteen classrooms. You'll see at the bottom of that page, we have to. All classrooms older than you should be equipped with. Then I'd say sinks, there's one classroom across from the library towards to get removed at some point, probably like this computer lab. Although there was a whole tilt in the long way, these pieces are waiting to come back already. But adequate standardized electrical in the room. Um, I can really check. To then exhaust again with noise levels in mind. So moving over to operational support areas, um. Like I talked about, this is sort of a separate application if you do this. You also should put your reasons for your research on the uh. Building management system, physically alarmed. So that you know if you're out of temperature, they're not, as I understand it. And then obviously the impact improvements, which we'll talk about later in the show. And I was not sure if the fire suppression system was tied into the firearm system now and then. It wasn't at one point before the firearms. So if it's not, it should be. But I made it already. Proper reconfiguration down in the same paragraph there with the kitchen. That gives you space to have a food service uh workspace. That gives you um a couple of prep areas. Ventilation, they they needed in there. It's hot. So bringing in proper um HPA some. Cooling the domed ones and going there, I'm not honest to you, but we definitely ventilation at the least. And some some control or an aeropera. Within this, Josh can't do too much control and that's the reason. Um, the book room. It needs to go back into a classroom. The book room also houses the uh literacy coordinator. That's a security technical. Certainly from around where you but they. Kind of pushing into classrooms. As part of the literacy collaborative, but. The layer to send that before is the collection. It's kind of a shelf with a perimeter of the room. The literacy coordinator, a desk space in there, and then there was also a conference space in the middle so that um small staff. Meetings could happen in there, whether it's um collaboration with the literacy coordinator. Recently made that a portable space for other units as well, whether it's a. My IT and or or anything. But it gives you, it kind of gives a bunch of of. Problems there. It gives you the the bookstores back. It gives the literacy coordinator their guest space now. And it gives you a lead space because they're ready to smell that right now. Two literacy coordinators? Okay, it's two literacy coordinators. Much as fun. The work rooms just need to be uh some consideration to strategically place in there. If you look at the Dennis Myers diagrams, I don't really any considerations given into those. It looks as though they kind of took the existing things. The only thing they were just kind of. Marking down some parts and checking there's a spot for it. It didn't give a lot of consideration to the things that weren't missing, like we did. And what it was under paper, it should be some different place so that. They're in reasonable proximity to teachers, especially at the elementary level, because there is much. Opportunity to receive their room and grab materials at home if you're too scared of the dirt. So they're depending on the teacher next door to kind of. You know, stand at the doorway between them and just keep them on their vocal environment. That's something that more I have to bear with here from one side of the building to the other. It should be. The relationship is the same position. Now we get down to IT. The IT director said that the switches that are located in the electrical line currently. Is adequate. But they do need space for. Equipment that's not currently being used, whether that is um. Broken equipment that needs to be serviced. There's always a handful of extra stuff, usually the old things that. A monitor that was replaced, but the old one isn't plugged in yet. You've got a shelf just in place, something down there, so you gotta pull it out and. And then pull it back into service. They need space for that stuff. We really don't want to carry it right now. It's. It's a main room that used to be a locker room, bathroom, loft of the multi-purpose room. It's also their facility of supplies in there. It's also great technology in the area. He's. He's working in. It still has the toilets and sinks too. It's still there. It's still a bathroom if they want to. But they they need to have an independent space for that storage. There should be space in that in there for your IT staff. There. We're getting IT celebrations in the district. The kind of the original available and when they get to high school, there's no place for them to. Do anything really unless they come after hours for direct what's going on in that room during the day. They don't have a desk space where they could work on a computer. They'll get back here from what I understand. If they need to serve us some type of ready places, screen for a keyboard or whatever it is. The IT director would also like it that we can large to have an isolated wiring closet in front of space. That could include desk space and storage. So all these things could be included in an isolated wiring closet, which would just have your. Your switches, your touch panels, your wiring for the people, whatnot, stuff like that. But there wouldn't be really the existing electrical closets. You would add all of that. And you want to be within, it's their their theme for anything they're gonna have. So you really need to show the limitations there in where if you want to punch that all down, you could exist a wiring closet. In the existing building. Um, storage. They needed right now, I mean, we've afforded tables, I don't excuse me, desks to replace tables and. You definitely get rid of stuff that don't get temporarily as the control or whatever want of a specific teacher. Swords, but what I mean, um. Want to be able to connect to those assets for when you need that right there. With it, which is the topic. But that's where some of those minimalist spaces right now could come in handy. If you're using some of the small classrooms that are undersized for classrooms. For the the things that are taking place in those minimalist spaces. That's uh space right now is currently being used for like a special IT center with a small group of students. In some cases, the small rooms are taking more than one group of students. They used to do many big classrooms, so it's not new, crammed into these closets, but I can look at the work. Um, the assistant principal was in one of these little rooms by four corners at one point. So the window is that's now student support. Again, those students that just keep happening. But this is kind of been another little. Storage space next to the boiler room. Yeah, it's very warm in the room because of the temperature of the boiler. Um, but using some of these spaces now, which is not really appropriate for our space to support for those storage needs. Makes a lot of sense. Um, the teachers' room. Give it a classroom, a full-size classroom. If you ever got into a vacuum, that for example, to return that classroom for educational purposes, you could. But the size of the staff won't take the full-size classroom size space for for them to keep their own gym. Take the bathrooms out of it. There are staff bathrooms relatively, but that that can be used. Uh, it just, nobody wants to be adjacent to that. Um, and that room would keep that with the other staff rooms in the district, like it would keep out of iron control. It's not, it's not cool to have a. A cooler area that will light for fifteen minutes, we can launch. Moving on to page twenty-four, operational support areas continuing. Like I said, the art room really just make sure the storage needs aren't being met. It looks like they are, but just be sure. Because that would be a furniture solution, not really a construction solution. A furniture would obviously be a part of of you know enlarging the right thing in the building. Uh, the library. You get most of it back just by implementing these other recommendations. You take the bulk of them back over the library. Um, you take the library, there's storage for the backs, you don't have this amount of stuff running circulation backs. IT has its own storage space, so those things are open deposit too, like they used to be. It all kind of goes back to more. The the thing that really needs to be addressed is the flooring in there. It needs to be finished. I believe here, the obvious solution is to go to these teeth, let's tell you all here from a maintenance standpoint. But carpet it makes more sense in the library, especially with little kids. They like to kind of sit down against the shelf and look through a book. It's better from an acoustical standpoint, you know, large stuff like that. Library here is carpeted, um. It also um. Helps with the sun. That's got very good solar exposure there and during the fall, winter and those spring months when the sun's at a low angle. It hits right off that floor and shines right at you. So it's the carpet would help with that, but to this, but the shades in those windows are. Basically all are not in the shade. It's not not a light filter. It's it's blocking, you know. This also doesn't seem about as soon as it can develop, so. But you you. You achieve a lot of the the issues. You achieve a lot of the solutions just by implementing the other solutions there. The immense made a better of this. We really kind of convert with Dennis Myers on this one almost completely. So what they proposed is taking what is right now, I think it used to be the conference room. I'm not sure if it's. Especially for the year, we care about four corners, just once the nurse's office. Um, they take that room, they take the what is the work room, the old art storage room. They take all of that to the main office area there. They create the main office suite there. Um, with the large nurse's office. EBA compliant bathroom off of the nurse's office. But we they put a shower in there. If needed, uh, they created an assistant principal and I got a good space in there. Using, um. But they they. They really did put a lot of effort into creating a workable space there. They also take what used to be the locker room bathrooms off of the gym and create. A conference room there off of the main lobby. And an office space for a um special according there at the middle level if there is one. The reason that's nice is you can have a meeting. With parents or guardians or whatever the case is. In a conference room setting there without giving anybody access to the middle area in the day. They're just accessing the lobby. If you keep that existing locked door also. You can actually like a main. Conference with them during the school day and they don't have. Any access to the board or students. Um, that we we agree with all of that. Electrical. Replace the panels as suggested, uh, some of them are original. Uniform, electrical. Oh, electrical, it's so important. Um, we don't talk about it, but they're modular options. There are two where every classroom has a wire quite above the ceiling grid. That can plug into a power pole. If you, say you have a forty by forty room, this is quite above the center of the ceiling. It's twenty-five feet long. You could bring it to maybe a perimeter wall in any direction. Drop a power pole through the ceiling tile planted in. You know, along with the power option, as the needs of the nation is too down the road if every room is wired at that hole. That's basically at a higher cost, but it gives facilities down the line a lot more flexibility. Um, just to throw the power pole down by the floor, whether it's to the wall or to the floor and you can do that. Plumbing. Just like electrical, it should be standard and be far in in classrooms. So that any classroom space can be used for any class study. As the needs change and flow surely. It shouldn't have to revolve around the fact that this room has a sink, this room doesn't, this room has an athletics, this room doesn't. You're creating the uniformity for the twenty-first century classroom. And the major, I mean, really thinking there that a leader should go. Their noisy, their little class, like me, whether it's. rooftop option, something of the. Above the ceiling grid line, but the roof line or something round. Now, you know, ground, mountain, ground side of the building, I don't know, there's someone. That feeds into a network network, like creating a centralized. Uh, to each that option. With Barbara, everyone going. Exchange, rotation. Seating. Dehumidification does not really exist. I included a picture at the very end of this report of second ceiling tiles. It's a common problem throughout that building. Um, actually, the oldest wing of the building is the one that should was. Really the. At least around the second, it's turned from the tiles. Um, that's caused by humidity levels not being managed, but there's also a at some point a. It's kind of fire glass insulation just kept it above the grid. The grid's not ready for that. Your tiles aren't ready for that weight. So insulated is important, but getting it right is also important. When you have all that insulation up there too, it gets very difficult to uh. Do the things you do above the grid on, whether it's farming, wiring. Things like that. So that's where we have to reach back. You may want to just consider cooling the whole building. But I think dehumidification would go a long, red way, but when you look in the windows, they all have bases hanging out of them. It's something you're going to need to deal with all those old base seeds, whether it's. It's still, if you just include your corporate, if you want to your centralized system. It's there, manage it to what these things are the proper levels, not saying that. You keep them in place, but if you have the ability. The winter will become more and more in your brain too. It just, uh, there's some areas are longer and other. That it gives you the ability, but it's very hard to dehumidify that air. And then I'm going to talk to you a little bit about exterior spaces. Um, if you look at the Dennis Myers proposals, they show you the proposed tree line, the existing tree line, all of that stuff. They pretty much address everything that we're saying there, but they don't address the playground. The playground is very large, very spread out. There will, a lot of that equipment was taken out of the space and stuff. Some of it is just. The last couple of years, um, the leading slide that was there has killed this one way. But I would imagine that playground is right there, but there's some staffs that are putting with kids running around everywhere after long circumstances, just because it's so big. Um, but you you want, you need to address the interior, but while you're doing that. You may want to. Revisit how it's set up, where it's laid out. Whether that's relocating it to a smaller playground, whether it's small field space or. Part of the existing playground. It may not make sense to keep it as large as it is. Again, these are recommendations, but any final proposals with the architect really should incorporate the buildings, the building level. It's only kind of to relax a little better tonight, doesn't seem like. It's only kind of to relax a little better tonight, doesn't seem like there was much of that originally. It was very conceptual, based on what was already in different places. Um, and then obviously any carpet that is removed for a large room should be replaced somewhere else. And if you look at this, they do propose a new parking lot above the gym, they propose enlarging. Um, if you don't enlarge the upper stack parking lot, you do really need to look at trees up there, although I don't like my life parking there because there's pine trees all around it, there's always a huge jump up if you park over there. So even if you like it, well, you got to, it's up there. And then I'm trying to put in something at the end here that I want to talk to you guys about, um, the telephone system there. And then I get a little personal want to talk about this, but this came up many times when I talked with the staff. That they can get an outside line to call up, and they need to, and people can't call her. And when I say I'm going to get personal, my wife worked at Hill School for five years now, and I called her twice. Once when my dad had stroke, and once when my younger brother died unexpectedly. Neither time I could get to visit to the building. I got a busy signal, I got a voicemail, I could redial, like everything could not get through to the building. That's a problem, and if I can't get it, people try to call up to me there. I like to just constantly redial my wife's phone until she saw this fault and knew that something was wrong. And call the death, but everyone gets through. And the staff complaining of the same, that they need to call parents during their prep period, they can't turn off the line. I don't know if it's true, but somebody said there's two lines to the building. So you've got to call it in and call it out, that's it. You know, I don't know if that's a limitation of the number of phones, I don't know if that's a limitation of the phone system, but it's definitely, uh, a, some, something troubling, needs to be looked at. And even if you did nothing, you have to really institute that part and, and address it. Maybe with your eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, because that just is, it is a serious problem that, that's there. Obviously, any phone enhancements, if you get into hardware, like a phone system versus adding a line, should be given due consideration both function within a large, with a larger building, if you do, hold a chair around that, but then the rest of the renovation. Um, so page twenty-seven is just our final thoughts, and then we'll work on all the next things, but, um. So they talked about all of our, 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 but we really recommend bringing Dennis Myers back in now with our recommendations. And I feel with the staff, whether it's, you know, initially at a a leadership level, it really makes sense, we've got to decide how you bring a building, a whole issue. But there needs to be some consideration too, but the people in the building, you know, on how. We didn't go so far as to say that this should go here, this should go there, but it's, it's not just, it's the people that really understand. You know, how the building flows, works each day. But you do need to bring them back in, you should have at least enough thousand square foot house because that will afford you to have a pre-taped program. So you're reading what the state standards there, even on the Dennis Myers drawings, although the ones are a thousand yard larger. A few of them, I think, close, I couldn't quite tell if it was nine eighty-nine or nine ninety-nine, they're right there. And then some consideration what the building should be given to, whether or not these kindergarten classrooms, if you've already worked them to hit the housing threshold. Should they have a bathroom for students? Help kindergarten to body training. The reason the staff really accompany them to the bathroom. They're like, I'm in a bathroom in the classroom, they don't have a reasonable, that came up a little bit in conversation. We didn't give so far as to recommend that we do it, but some considerations should be given with the architect and whether and the staff, whether or not that really is, um, absolutely necessary and feasible, whether it's from a financial or, you know, space, square, square footage perspective within the foreground of expansion. I'm not going to read the rest of that, just kind of read our final thoughts there a bit, but I think it makes more sense, we talked a little bit at the group, but all about, do you do it all at once? Do you kind of say we need the classrooms right now? Deal with this later, the problem with that, we think you should do it all at once, get it done, start the bond, just from a couple different perspectives, you need to prepare the price, get on your fixed bond schedule, you know what you're going to be looking at for costs down the road to pay it off. Your building is ready for any potential changes in the future. But the other thing is, if you go into, you know, if you go into three hours to go to the whole school, there's definitely a disparity with the physical condition of the building from the other two in the district. And you know, if you give our facilities department a building where all of the deficiencies are corrected, that they are capable of maintaining. They've been able to do it here, the, this building is, for the most part, twenty years old, when you start on the last final budget. Clear the rules, so it's only about eighty years newer than the whole school. You never had a block in it, it's pretty loose stuff. They've been able to maintain that, it's brand new, completely. If we take care of all the problems, we give the building a square footage, what it needs for the future, our facilities department can just get from there. You just kind of, you're balancing your costs in the future, you know, it's going to be, you're not always kind of reacting to the problems as they pop up, waiting for a school discreeding to get approval to build two more classrooms. You know, and when I say that, that's what I told the Denver, you build to, you build to, you build to their very small town home. But I think you need to, you need to be in a situation where you're waiting for school discreeding. And so like, fair, let's bring in another model, so you're like, you're not reacting instead of just being ready for the, the, the changes down the road. So I have to kind of just give you some information while I'm, you've got a list of what we determined, talking with staff and stuff. Obviously, we need full-sized classrooms. And obviously, when you have these things that are not there, I think now they're corrected. Because we have a lot of ones go back over a lot of months, so can dance, oh, we could have, we could currently, but by my counter, that's thirty-six classrooms. So you're only out for five flex rooms, if you did a full sixteen additional classrooms there. And keep in mind, twelve classrooms kind of very large, just appropriately. Uh, the next page, we just kind of show you some student enrollment. Uh, the reason I included this is, what's interesting is while enrollment is kind of declined, especially with it creeping up. And it seems that the limited information that's been provided to us at the severity of the special activities seems to be increasing too. Like they, since we started this, they've gone from one bridge classroom to two bridge classrooms at, at the school. Which is basically, if my English learning is correct, for someone specialized programs for, for students that may otherwise be. So these are just for, to extend the ability, but in this is to kind of adjust those needs from, again, from what I am sharing there. Another one to keep there, and then you told me, and then I just gave you some larger, um, images that we found throughout the several floors, see like a larger version of the existing floor and, um, the phase, you know, all that stuff is back there. And then just a few more images, like I said, the sanding tiles throughout. But Josh, you could give Josh the final, you go back and necessarily bring the tiles if you don't address this, you know, you don't address the back there. Tiles and kinds of, kinds of, there's been trauma there, they're just going to be the same thing. So I mean, if you're not a good institution, I believe they want to, or two by two grid or something like that, but definitely placing the tiles as a method, which is the type of why he hasn't done that, he would have done it if, if that was the situation. So I'm sorry I went quite long on that, but it's important after all, this wants to give you the most detailed, um, with me, what we found. I have a few members here, did I leave anything out, did I miss anything? And I guess if you have any questions, I'll attempt to answer them, I mean, you can, I'm sure you've been along, but, um, otherwise, let me also think of something. Thank you very much, super detailed, appreciate you. Does anybody have immediate questions?
Thank you, um, this is Amy, and I first want to say thanks, this is really exciting. Um, you know, I want to say like, the building of the cultural state is, I like your work, tired. Um, it, it is tired, and it does need some help. Um, and I am all for the recommendations for the committee, and my comments are to carry things forward and to sort of start thinking about some fine tuning. Um, I have a lot of them, and so I'm just kind of like, lay them out, and then, um, I don't know, like, maybe just email to Gori or, okay. Um, I feel like there's missing considerations for gender diverse students, um, for the restrooms. So that would be single stall, um, restrooms that are not for teachers. Um, so the, the modern standard to, um, address this is instead of having one room with many stalls that's like for, quote, the girls, or quote, the boys. You have lots of doors around the hall for single occupancy rooms for whatever student wants to go into them. Um, next, I, um, have some comments about like the sales pitch overall, and question point you experienced from the board, I'm just not familiar with who takes this off and then and then adds to it, but I think it's, it doesn't have yet, and the details really aren't there yet for it to have this type of information yet, but I think we need to get there before it goes to a town meeting. And that is basically the lifetime operational costs. You know, like what is it costing to operate and work with those tools right now? What are those big items? And what would be the estimated operating costs of the new bill school? Because when you analyze the lifetime anticipated, you know, it's probably going to be a twenty to forty year lifetime. That operational cost often is much more expensive even than the upfront construction cost. And it's like a hidden cost that people don't realize that it's actually adds up to more than the construction cost, so to me, I would think that's a more important number. Um, and then related to that, what is gap to be for efficiencies in there to save on contributing to carbon emissions? You know, what are the efficiency features with the water, the air, the energy, all that? Different thought. Was it considered to just like let hold either the sixty-two or the sixty-four portions? And convert those to the great spaces? I didn't catch when you said it was considered to take down the walls of those sections and then build new walls to make, you know, bigger classrooms? And that just didn't make sense, but I didn't know if it made sense to like, you know, just completely eliminate like all the interior walls, if you guys considered that or not. Um, I love, like, really one of my favorite parts are these big, um, exterior courtyards in the interior of the plan. Um, I think those are fantastic, I think they will lend themselves well to, you know, very close proximity to the indoors outdoor educational experiences. Um, but I feel like they may be underutilized if they're not well planned and well equipped. And with respect to the commentary that, you know, the classrooms need to have standardized amenities or features, for lack of a better word. I think that those courtyards also need to be out of the map leg, so that they can be really well utilized. And then let's see here. I was really happy to see the, um, past demographic trends at the end of the report, but I'm interested in having information about demographic projections into the future. Um, I would very much like to see a dedicated lactation room. I'd like to know the answer that I anticipate I will get when this hits the town meeting, which is, all right, fine, if I consider voting for that, like, when, how long will this last? You know, like when, when will we need to do this again? And then I'm not clear on the timeline, so are we, is the goal that this would hit town meeting next year in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three? Twenty twenty-four? Yeah, so I, I just think it would be helpful to have sort of a timeline in mind. For when we hit town meeting, and I'm glad you're, yeah, I think not twenty twenty-two, so.
So it just comes up that you asked that question, um, so just to clarify, I think the next step for this board is to decide whether or not you want to move forward. So you have the recommendations, I think you all will know along, but you should make it, that there needs to be some type of construction. Um, I, my recommendation would be that you decide whether or not you're going to put out a new RFP, and that's for that, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I just think has to work, but we have been coming for a very specific purpose. And if the board decides to go forward and start looking for, um, more detailed work, um, we need to put out a RFP for other firms where Ellen's time just went through the process, careful with the middle of it, and lots of new experienced, um, firms that will help develop those schools in the area. So they're definitely out there and they will take us through the entire process, um, you know, they'll start with sort of getting that firm on board, they'll have architects with them, engineers. They do all of the, um, advertising, the PR, they also have the community, it's really comprehensive what these firms are, are able to do for us, so I think this board like super, super infant, um, and it's a year into time, what is going to happen next? So it would, I would anticipate maybe the following year, on the, the, the large, and hopefully, fingers crossed, events by anybody that they because that's huge, that's one of the causes to.
Can I just take a quick comment, uh, kind of go through some of those? The Dennis Myers report does have population projection information in it. Uh, it gets on page thirty-three. And with the information that they had a few years ago, this was intended to, uh, meet our needs through twenty-four. And it's twenty twenty-one now, which you can probably pay off the bond, but if you get their recommendation. So like, when we say, you know, extra classroom here or an extra classroom there, it's not really a guarantee, it's really being sure that you don't pay off the bond to turn around and do sort of another bond. The other reality is we have two other school buildings that may need bonded items um, to address needs, uh, on a large scale that might not have been probably paying for this, although, I'll tell you along the scale, he can maybe not speak for that, but there, there's a pretty comprehensive plan in place for the other buildings, and the, the items failed, and they would really have thought that with the, with the kind of addressing them at a large scale project. Um, and a clarification question, so a lot of the things that you came up with, um, you have the, um, the gender neutral restrooms. Those are your recommendations, because nobody else brought them up. So I agree with you that that is the reality, and an important reality that should be considered. When you as a board was forward, that is something that should perhaps be communicated to Dennis while, um, I think that would be in addition to the large scale bathrooms, or this, I guess.
So that you would have sort of a choice of where to go.
There's a lot of cost with demolition. Demolishing contract here, like, it just, we couldn't justify bringing proposal that is similar and unnecessarily demolishing sections of a building at a ridiculous level, but also um, that, that is why, like, it was talked about, somebody did throw that up, like, I wish you could just tear that down. But there are many of us that probably wish that, but from a financial standpoint, just probably couldn't be justified when they're already talking about a large project and a very expensive project to handle those, those costs. So that's why we do recommend, we like sponsors, like if you took the nineteen sixty-two way out of there, that gives a lot of breathing room for, um, that section of the building, which is very close to the property line, I mean, they'll pick up job off move there from early to row. Like, maybe it would be nice to have a little more space there, but you would have to make up that square footage somewhere else, and that's all our costs, I just. I just, I don't think it, I don't think it is worth it. So that, that's why that's not there. Nobody mentioned lactation, remember the fact is that that is very important because there was not public for channeling it all the time. So I agree with that again. Everybody on our company were, oh, it just wasn't brought up as something that should be, should be in the building. How long this experience? Oh, courtyards. I, I agree. We can talk about it in our report, but if you get that. Um, I'm thinking of the looks of town hall building right now on Main Street. I was giving it a laundry school. Uh, that has courtyard in the middle. And I worked at the town hall when we moved there from the old town hall. And that courtyard was actually adopted during school years by the parent teacher association. And I had Beaver Rockway and Teles out there. And Jen at the green, which used to be where the ice rink and some three A and their major. There was all kinds of landscapes laying out there and it looks like they did use that for an extension back to that next phase. Could be great if you, if you get it, but with the player in place. It was mostly grass free out there so that Josh is gonna have to drive along the worst of all ways to, to care about it. But you know, it was, I know we used it for a bunch of years from there to town halls, but it looks like it was a very nice space to promote perspective. So the absolute brand. And I did notice nothing to, but it's not covered, but I like that. So that's all. Thank you for the guys some questions.
So just to focus this. A very long term thing and maybe tonight, especially to be, as I said, remember you know, look for procedures, pardon. And there's also various paper information, I guess. So I think for now, um, we could probably, there's all nine. I think we'll probably have more questions of committee. Process wise, if you're going to go blast, there's more you should have done, but not have access to some you wish you did. You know, as far as specifics of what the plan is, that we're all from all these architects and the people that we've played to do that. So not trying to stop anyone, but I think it's kind of why I keep this a little bit focused.
Thank you. I was not on the board at the time of the entire presentation, number four, and I'm glad the content of that's four. And one of the things that really stuck out to me that made it into main operating is the try and reverse schoolwork meeting of first school building is fifty years. So when I saw this report, I had the same thoughts as you. I'm really concerned about, you know, keeping buildings that are fifty-two, fifty-one years old. Uh, I think some of the concern was during this construction, having a lot of students. Uh, but I do agree that they would be very, as our superintendent recommended, to probably have a RFP so we can compare what the options are.
I did have a question. First off, I want to say thank you to the committee. I know this has been a long time in the works. Uh, and two other questions are if you could just clarify to us what the mission of the committee was? And then the other question we have is I would love this color report. Thank you so much. So really anticipated properties. It looks roughly. The one thing I didn't see is each individual's role that is on the committee. Obviously it's important to include, you know, community members across the community. It'd be nice to know, um, who is actually a staff member or perhaps a junior member or a staff in this and how they might be associated with our school. Thank you.
I can adjust that now. So without the need to, you're very cloward. It weren't really. This group asked me to chair at the beginning. I did, I tried to be the vice chair. But we have a really good mix of community members. You know, Sammy here is a staff member and a resident. I'm a resident, a parent, you know, the spouse of a staff member. Jenny at the time wasn't a staff member, but is now, but is also a parent in principle. Rob here was a resident, but he's had kids that have gone through the school system. While he's just in currently have children enrolled, it's still interesting, you know, seeing our school district and prosperity. Uh, we have Kristen Royal, who is a central students teacher here at American Academy. A parent of their school students. Who I've heard a kid. Stephanie Thera was with us. She dropped off, I believe in the fall, she took on some new responsibilities for Pals that just created some scheduling conflicts. So she, she couldn't see us to the end. But she's a parent of school children here and a resident of the town. We have Phil Bowe there kind of key man in the middle. He is a parent of children in that building. He is a resident. He came through the school system here. And he also works in construction and at the time was working on a school construction project in a new market. So we, we had a lot of I have wrong words up the fire. I just forget because everybody wastes that time. But yeah, Rob, the, the fire chief might get the title or anything. You know, brings a lot of the life safety inspection perspective to, to the project as well. So.
This is really a question to the board. Is there a need to formally receive or accept a report from this subcommittee? Do we have additional duties that we rely to towards the work at this point? Um, these people have really worked really hard and hard for us and not only them, but I also want to think of staff who work in collaboration with them. So what kind of, do we need action on this to make it formally accept the, uh, recommendation, uh, the field school recommendation?
I don't, I don't believe sorry, I don't, it doesn't involve, but actually that is definitely an echo of some of the, um, thank you all. The administration's, the, your sauce available, you back in the spirit and allowing this to be there. Staff meeting, you're going back. You know, whatever furniture that I was saying is kind of like the landing. It'll be important that we have staffing managers in those areas. I was teaching, those are the ones that are there, that be there today. So we're going to go rate somebody those means. Any other questions from these guys?
Well, we have committee members here. I would just ask that if you're at all interested, your participation could be truly valuable. Um, and when we had to review the RFPs from firms, there were, you know, all of the sections, the areas were so helpful to review those or to see what people brought to the table and their intimate knowledge of everything. Um, I'm sure you'd be very welcome to sit around if you're interested. So thank you so much for your work.
Can I just throw one more thing out there that I wanted to bring up? It's not renovation recommended, but it came up during our process. When we, the whole school staff, which was, I think, a murdered janitor. One of the others that kind of kept coming up was it felt like they were not getting their needs met by the facility staff. And I know that that's probably not the reality. It's just a perception. And I think a great way that you could address this is to look into an electronic ticketing system for facilities. And you have reported on that, right? The last I saw was like a clipboard or a folder full of all these paper things. When things go unaddressed, I, I am sure that there's probably a reason why somebody to request getting it happening. They just can always worry. It's not anymore time to get this simply with no status of their ticket. You could adopt formal operating procedures on like how do you give low priorities? The timeframe, the expectations for those. Requesters can see any, uh, any changes or, you know, some German language on the word with, basically modifications to the status of their ticket. That could also be part of a report and regular meeting between facilities director of building leadership. The leadership can see at any point what their staff. You can have requesting of our facilities department. And if you're doing a regular meeting, which may already be happening, but you don't have that technology piece in place, they don't have the visual of what their staff are requesting to discuss why you're running off. Things can be addressed to the staff members expectation. And like I said, I'm a Josh's job in the past and I think that's similar capacity. There's always a reason why you do or don't do something. I guess just making sure those people are. But then you also have a school board member that gets, um, assigned to building stuff. So that report also be fresh. So that's part of their committee packet. And their board report, they created pressing question things of the facility directors director independently of the inside, but it just gives a little transparency, understanding. Cause I, I mean, I know Josh will ultimately, he and his team are ignoring the needs. There, there's a reason, but it's just the communication piece is, is not ideal and what kind of paper we're requiring that we have right now. So suggest.
Thanks for that. As an IT person, I hate to, but they're necessarily. But also what you said earlier, I think it's important to and that for updated building. Constantly chasing K R and some of that, that's, that's what I was asking about. Again, thank you all. I'm sure this gave you time for conversation for some time to add a little station about moving forward sometime soon.
I'm just looking at our scheduled meetings. It's May fourth today. We have May eighteenth and June first on the books. We're holding that meeting for this year. And I'd like to really strongly encourage the board, if we're not getting anything out from our F P, that we get that approved and open the door before we close the books on this year by June first.
Yeah. So I would encourage everybody to look this on your own before next meeting. Uh, you all, thank you very much on next meeting agenda. Um, now maybe you can set some type that that's the people who can take some sort of action.
Thank you. So it's a little uncomfortable hearing that, um, as a board member that staff still have their needs and that. So I'd like to ask our speaker, and I'm sure that she's not comfortable hearing that here probably. And just speak to that as a background. Tell us what you would encourage people to do if they're feeling that way so that they know in proper channels to be the hall and go to write, you know, those issues to the board. Thank you.
How you doing? Has to be me breathe or I think that's a little bit outside of the kind of item. So we can put that out in the agenda if we do that.
Yeah, I mean, I believe this is Josh's hands. Um, he, uh, he has brought to me several times a digital option and he had not covered the budget because it was very costly. Um, so that's something I can tell was looking toward it. I've never heard a complaint, so I'm kind of surprised to hear that. Um, I know there were some issues with the aging of the building and just things that, like you said, it couldn't, couldn't deal. There were reasons for that. So I think that's definitely a personal issue that I want Josh to go. We'll talk about that.
And that's not a small, right?
Okay. Um, so that brings us to seven D, just to be your point more.
Thank you very much.
So today we are at only thirty thousand dollars. Um, as you know, we did approve some projects of others, maybe that have not been put through the system yet. And I would anticipate more money coming soon. So at the point where we're starting to close things down, I mean, you know, like Amber said, when you look at alignment, it's fifty thousand here, fifty thousand there. All of a sudden that adds up to quite a ton. Um, specifically things like the course money and workshops. You know, the year's not done, but we're going to get some hopefully to kind of figure out what's left to close those lines that we want as far as funds are being released. So there will be more than that, but that's what we're at today.
Thank you. Any questions coming to that? Um, I, I guess not to give direction nullily, but yeah, right. So in rough math, if we take out the almost two hundred that we talked about last time, we're still at eight hundred fifty thousand dollars or something. Maybe possibility of more coming. Maybe the word about some expectations for F M B C and it to me this past weekend are around seventy thousand dollars. Um, as a rough figure, I should not say we have to spend down to that. But as any pointed out, we don't have any days left either. So Josh, I would encourage you to maybe make a similar list for next meeting and we may not do waiting. Uh, but if we feel like we're in a position to spread some of that money, I think perhaps the ability to do it with a list in front of us, but you have to turn off, just really don't make this up.
I can do that.
You know, I think I would say prioritize safety type stuff first. Um, in that one place, it's, it's priority, but like having, having a list in front of us in case we can, that's actually.
And again, not to prolong this, but just to let you know, um, the approach that you're here took was they, they did a warrant article and put in, I think a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to engage a firm. So it comes with a costly price tag. You're not going to be able to do that this year because you won't be able to get the RFP, get the responses and get through that. So you may want to consider looking at some things that you planted for next year to do now to free up that money to use your fund for next year. So it's just a thought.
I'm not sure on what you meant, Penny, but you said that the electronic ticketing system, Josh, is costly. But it is in the range of where the numbers we have available to us. I think it would be worthwhile to turn on that list for us to consider around speaking.
Anything else around budget? All right, we will move on to more reports. I don't think we have lines three. Jay's not here. Was there, was there? A R V A? No. Budget committee. So I guess that would be, I've had our meeting. I was the main office of everything in the past. I think I mentioned before, Mr. Page did schedule a retrospective of the season and it's coming up once it's seventeen, soon in the next couple of weeks. I'm sorry for how that goes. But I just don't know if it's good, good way to look back. And I guess I did receive, you know, like one budget committee member is not going to turn this year. So for people in the community, um, if it's volunteered, which are ready to turn all that's in a point of position by the moderator, I believe. Um, so first, a list, I don't know if you want to get on all this, on that town hall. Anything to say?
Our next meeting date is May seventeenth. It's a Monday at six P M.
Monday and six, Monday is, sorry, what's the date?
Seventeenth.
Monday is seventeenth at six P M. Well, that other meeting is definitely on the seventeenth that that supports. The budget meeting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. So I'm pretty sure I'm reading that correctly. Eight seventeen.
All right, um, we are at principal's, so.
Okay, I'll be brief. We are actually maybe it's funny, but typically because we are writing new, uh, your preparations, particularly around graduation. Finalizing my final schedule and trying to get students past the finish line. But with that, we're also really certainly about preparations for next year. Uh, and you know, part of that's the learning process. We need that investment fees for the fall. Uh, and then another added component to all of this is that we got winter carnival in May. Uh, so that's actually what Ryan, this busy guy, I'm telling you that he is part of students and stuff that are charged to be, um, you know, putting on pretty unprecedented winter carnival that I think has been held at I don't know, particularly among seniors, I'm anticipating having this experience that as a group and. having this experience that are as a group and I would be more confident of the students and stuff. Go out with that picture. So something about that. The only other thing I'll say is that, you know, we are continuing to you know, navigate COVID and in addition to that, work on what kind of interventions we can put in place. When looking at that, we're always trying to look for things that are not single serving or single kind of purpose interventions with things that we can also use support our programming now in future. So for instance, you know, when we're looking at a contact period, we also brought some collapsible tables in order to make sure that those tables are D F ones that we could use those for S E T testing in future rather than six foot one, which is called boards. So you know, secondly, the portable microphone is being run off of an amplifier that is also battery powered. So teachers can take those outside for, you know, external outdoor classrooms. And then after that, it can also be used for our music program. So it's just those sorts of things that we're trying to be creative with so that it's not basically the only ones to be terrific in the last three years. I want things that are going to be, I think, was just part of the program.
What do you do, everybody, tonight? There were some questions. We're not keeping this up tonight. So, John?
Oh, let's see. Thank you. I do need to thank Pals because Pals have been in the building this week. I believe they have still asked. Sure as I can ask. But every day they'll be giving something to our staff, whether it's food or a treat, something major. I don't think we can understate the importance of that for staff. And the family against people, you know, going down to teachers' room, they're desperate, they're checking it all out. It's just maybe more so the shared companies, but it just really shows people that are intelligent who support us. Sometimes they're hopeful, but sometimes they are there. So it's very much appreciated. I did meet with the new Palace person this morning. We talked about some of the end of the year. I think they've always been supportive with sale trips, things that they do. I did. Those that were new, I did try out the playground again. I'm going to get that sound there. But it was just about fundraising because I really got nothing to hide on our campus for kids to play. So we do have, it's might have been working with Josh to start clearing the area. So if certain parents were out with sickness area or something, I totally need to be there. I don't know if we'll be able to work something else to drop, but they've always been super supportive of all of these people. We are going to be testing next week. And we will be having a modified schedule rebuilding. House must get us, we have to provide the kids stacks so that you can get a snack every time you test. So that's very much appreciated. We do have to shut down the whole building for the test. We have to shut down every promo because it is a secure site. So no promos will work except for that test. So that's quite a charity that I was really looking to shut down. I don't know if I can all of the different promos. Kick this one. So it's over two hundred promos. So we'll be working on that. Amy Montario has reached out. She was our coordinator for environmental camp. She reached out. We have not had a she did reach out to them. They are willing to come to our school and do a day for the seventh grade outside of our building and a day for our sixth grade. Well, it doesn't compare maybe to the three or four days of our experience. Please will be able to watch something in place on campus. And the price honestly is more than reasonable for two days to have a team of people going to send the teachers to us and they'll do a back to the south, our back there, which would be exciting to do. We are, the parents are promotion, which will be outside. We've got some details that people work on. We typically have a seminar follow after. We will not do that this year. It would have to be outside if you're without one of the details. So we are working on that. Also working on every year, the facility department does some, quite a few of that experience. We did not have that last year in preparation for that. This year, I've got to do six weeks spacing and all that stuff, but we're going to continue to do that. This year, we try to roll that out. As we go. So I'll keep you posted on some of those, those things.
A lot of the same things going on at Hill as we're winding down. We're looking at injectings. We're going to Spirit Days every Friday in the last five weeks of school. Can't wait to see the girls get dressed up on staff too. That's they are very lively. That is one thing I have learned. There are so many hats in the building. And that is the app that she's like, because it's totally true. I love it because I get to see everyone's personalities and the kids and the factors. So that's my favorite thing. We are, we have outdoor classrooms that are being worked on right now. We're looking at doing outdoor classroom day on May twentieth. The idea is out there. We're kind of wondering at that. So we're excited to kind of get everybody outdoors doing some of those things since we're not going to field trips and that. One of the things we're spending quite a bit of time on is talking about next year. It seems premature to talk about it, but we really need to. And it's really, really important. A lot of our focus is on we want to hit the ground running. We know that this year there were challenges. There are, you know, I know like there were gaps, but those are the things we think about. So we're really working to put those plans in place. Developing our intervention systems and things like that so that next year we have that ability to really look at our data, determine what they needed and go from there. Because if you think about what we talked about earlier with our kindergartners who chose not to come in this year, they're going into first grade. That presents a huge challenge. So we do wind up with a classroom that is multi, like it's a multi-grade class. It's kindergarten. So we're preparing for those and really thinking about how we can do that. We're going to be up our intervention systems. Looking to get a look at our assessment practices, how we analyze data and things like that. So we're starting those conversations. I really want the staff to know that we have that in mind when we come back. We know where we're going to go. So that's a big thing that we're working on right now. We met as a team for our summer program to kind of take a look at that. There's going to be a survey going out. I'm still collecting to see who's interested in working. I think we will adopt it. We're going to have a focus on social emotional learning because of when staff was available to actually be there to support the program. But they are being very creative and I'm super excited about it. Like John said, teacher appreciation, it was very much needed this year, this week, and having those treats and things like that. There were smiles. There was a smoothie bus there yesterday. That was a, yeah, oh, it was a big hit. They really liked it. So we're very, very thankful for that. Another thing coming up really very similar is staff testing for us. It's May seventeenth through nineteenth. So we want all the same things that we have to go through in preparations for that. So winding down, but still keeping next year in mind on challenges for this year that we're going to be prepared for next year.
There's all verses. John, can you play that?
Today she asked for
Aerial course.
The kid asked for one today.
No liability issues.
We have to go through insurance.
So I'm a big planner. I do not think it's pretty sure I'd be thinking about next year at this time. But I do think it might be pretty sure, even at the board's last meeting June first, to decide what the mask policy is going to be for next academic year. And so I was just looking at our calendar for the next board meeting. So we're re-planning on Tuesday, August third, board meeting on deciding when our mask policy is I mean, tentatively, is that the plan to decide where our mask policy for the next academic year is going to be at that time?
That's a great question. We actually just talked about that as an industry team today because the state is going to be asking once again for the entry plans. And we weren't really expecting that because we thought, well, we're back. So but they do want to know what we're, what accommodations, modifications we're going to have in place when we come back. So we do have the ability to revise that plan. So at this point, I think we just do your mask policy as it stands. And then I think any meeting that you have, it's going through this and certainly my office, sort of the latest, if you were going to change it and relax it. Then I would say we should make that decision. I'll start with the latest.
Any other questions?
I did have a motion on policy.
Okay. Surprise.
Okay. So my motion was going to be to draw all the first readings. CFA dash A all the way down to G C M D dash J. I don't know if there are any way. So
I'll second that.
All right. So what should we draw? The following policies before we start, they're all recommended for us draw. CFA dash A, most principal job description. CFA dash B, job description.
Probably job description. In order. So all of the ones under the first.
From CFA to the bottom. CFA A. Yeah. So CFA B, job description, MS, September ten. CFA A, job description, murder, murder, instruction, A. G C C A E, professional staff, presentations, conferences. G C M D dash A, TRS. Proch, for development, corporate job description. G C M D dash B, TRS, council or advisor, corporate job description. G C M D says, dash C, TRS, corporate job description. G C M D dash D, TRS, corporate job description. G C M D dash E, B A dash R, corporate job description. G C M D dash F, B A, audio services, corporate job description. G C M D dash G, P A, R, corporate job description. G C M D dash H, B A, R, corporate job description. G C M D dash I, TRS, advisory, trip advisor. And G C M D dash J, TRS, advisory, trip advisor. And here's the second. Any discussion? All taken.
Yeah.
Close. Fantastic. Anyone else have a policy? Right? Ten, make ones.
So I'm here to haunt you with a calendar. I'm desperately trying to schedule meetings for you and I know that we're seeing two people. It's very difficult to find a date when everyone can make it. So I need to know availability for June, July, and August. And I X out and read a few of the dates we do when they're unavailable because we need to graduation. So I can pass that around for board members. So we need to schedule a meeting for school association, the comment and the training. And then we also have to schedule a meeting to do your goals. It would be great if we did. If we can't schedule two, then I would say maybe four, five goals on August third. Hoping that this summer does not prove to be as busy as last summer did, but if you could just fill that in for me, that would help us schedule.
I quit the parents. And this is an evening, not like easily we can all.
We're only meeting on weekday with events. That is the plan at this point unless the board wants to get other ones.
Can find us that. We have in the summer. We're all available. Hang on both of these things. And Barrett's available. I'm all for it, but
Kevin for base here. To be determined. It used to be on Wednesdays, but selectmen moved to White Space. So we're going to something else.
Okay. So we can fill that out off the line. So that brings us to our second public conference section. Let's hear which is who. Sure. Let's go bring on. Yes. We'll move on. We've already done that publicly. Parents. Our next scheduled meeting is May eighteen. That's September. Same location. Any other? This is before we do something with Twitter. What you do here?
Second. Hi.
Thanks, everybody.